I feel like it's really short. Good evening. Is it working now? Or do I just talk loud enough? Okay, well, thank you for being here. I'm Erin Stone. I'm your board chair of Girl Scouts of Utah. Thank you all for being here tonight. This is a very, very special occasion. As you know, we have some marvelous guests from GSUSA here visiting with us, including our national CEO, Ana Maria Chavez. And we're so excited that she's here to speak with us and visit with us tonight. But, yes. Thank you, thank you. So, before we get to the main act, we'll do a little business because this is our town meeting. And we usually do host our town meeting in April. However, this year, we did delay it because we knew Ana was coming for this visit. And we thought it would just be such a great, special opportunity to have all of us together and hear from her. So, thank you for understanding the delay of the town meeting. And also, because of that, we have probably a little more information than we do when we do an April meeting. But, so I'm just going to give you a quick governance report about what the board has been up to. And, just a few items. So, the annual review, or the annual audit occurred. I, Bailey, an accounting firm, does our audit every year. And we received a clean audit with no significant adjustments. And accounting was good and transparent. The board approved the audit at the December board meeting. In the end of February, we had our board retreat at Tree Foil Ranch. It was a, our retreats are really great. It's a great time for our board to get together and strategize and talk about what our council is doing and where we're going and how we can do our best for our girls. So, it was a wonderful retreat, and we did a lot of great work. We had a few, in addition to the business that we usually conduct at our board meetings, we had a few special things happen. We had a group of students from the Masters in Public Administration Program at the U come up and do a presentation on fundraising. And they've been working with our Board Development Committee to help build board tools, to help our board be just even more dynamic and better for our organization. So, it was a pleasure to see them. And then, we also had a gentleman come and speak to us about fundraising, and specifically with regard to, as you know, we purchased 236 acres surrounding Cloud Rim last year. And he was talking to us about how to best go forward with raising money to make sure that we have Cloud Rim for the lifetime of our girls and the girls after us. So, it was really an inspiring and great presentation. We learned a lot. And we'll be moving forward with some of those ideas and options that he gave us after we go through convention this year. So, it'll be an exciting time. So, please stay tuned for more on that. With regard to our bylaws, if you remember, at our annual meeting last year, we passed amended and restated bylaws. And in those bylaws, we added something that we have not had before, which is the two new girl representatives on our Board of Directors. And so, we had girls apply for that position. And our Board Development Committee interviewed them. And I'm pleased to announce, we've had two girls nominated to our slate. Mary, and I'm gonna screw up this last name, Ormsby. Debbie's been telling me how to say it, and I can't. So, Mary Ormsby, who is here tonight. Where are you, Mary? Will you stand up and say hello? Woohoo! Thank you, Mary. Thank you for being here. And then, Victoria Sandoval, are you here? Victoria? I don't think so.
She's on a Girl Scout trip.
Oh, she's on a Girl Scout trip. So, she's out Girl Scouting. So, congratulations to Mary and Victoria. Thank you. Our board is really thrilled to have these girls come and work with us and give us the girl perspective on the decisions we're making that impact all of you. So, they're going to be really key to our council. And I know there's a lot of you here that will support them and give them your ideas to bring to us. So, thank you so much. It's gonna be great. And then, finally, and probably most importantly, our CEO search. As you know, Kathleen Sparrow resigned in March of this year. And so, our board quickly formed a CEO search committee. Well, and you all know, in the interim, Debbie Nielsen is running our council. And she's doing such a spectacular job. And I know many of you have talked to her. So, give Debbie a big hand. Debbie is just so amazing. And she has really just done an amazing job in her just few months at the helm. So, we can't thank Debbie enough for that. But our search committee has been hard at work. We decided to retain Evergreen, which is a search placement firm. And Evergreen works with GSUSA and helps many councils around the nation with their CEO searches. So, they're professional Girl Scout recruiters, basically. And so, we've been working with them. And our committee has just finalized our vacancy announcement. And that was posted this week. So, if you're interested in seeing that description, or if you know somebody who you'd like to send that description to, you can go to www.egreensource.com. And our posting is there. So, we appreciate people forwarding on applicants. That would be great to lead our council. So, we appreciate all our members' help with that search. So, and just so you know, the timeline on that, the application process will last through the 31st of July. And then, we will be interviewing the candidates in August. And we're hoping to place our new CEO in September, prior to convention. So, our new CEO will be able to experience the amazing opportunity that we have this coming October. So, I'll be looking forward to introducing him or her to you at that time. And it will be an exciting time for our council, okay? So, thank you so much. And now, I'm gonna pass the mic over to Debbie, who's gonna give you the operations update. So, thank you, Debbie.
Okay. I have pages and pages to tell you. I have so many great things to tell you. First of all, I want to talk about our recent announcement about our Out Base Shops. I know all of you know that. And I know there are a lot of concerns. And I want to assure you that we hear you. We understand everyone's concern with this change. And we will be connecting with you over the next few weeks to really find the best solutions for how we move forward, what is best, in the best interests of our council, of our girls, and of our resources. So, be patient with us, bear with us, and we will find the right solution. So, cookies. 1.5 million boxes. Wow. Wow. Girls, parents, families, cookie lovers, staff, volunteers, the cookie people at Little Brownie Bakers, everybody, everybody. Give all of us a huge round of applause for this great thing. Something pretty incredible this year. The top seller, and there's a former top seller in the audience, Ms. Jessica Gunderson. The top seller this year was a Juliette. Yes, Allison Eaton from Vernal sold 4,404 boxes. The other three top sellers that we honored at Cowabunga were Ashley Rose from the Tuilla Community Leadership Team, sold 3,252. Elisa Snyder from Crystal View Community Leadership Team, sold 3,550 boxes. And Caitlin Jarman from Crystal View Community Leadership Team, sold 3,550 boxes. Wow. Wow, yeah. When I saw Allison and her mom at the Cowabunga celebration, they told me that when they were unloading the truckload full of cookies at their house, Allison looked at her mom and said, "Mom, I think I can sell 6,000 next year." And her mom said, "Okay." Okay, so, who knows? I mean, you know, the goal is there. The cookie party was unbelievable. Cowabunga Water Park. Wow. There were so many people. Brandy Strand and her amazing staff had to have two cookie parties. So, Erin and I were so excited. We were there all day. We were passing out patches. We never did get to set a toe in the water. But it was so much fun. There were 1,380 people at the morning party, 1,225 people at the evening party. That's 2,600 people at the cookie party. It was so much fun. We had volunteer appreciation events since April was Volunteer Appreciation Month. We hosted them at American Fork in Ogden and at the Council Resource Center. There's been recent surveys done by our Volunteer Services Department. Hopefully, you all participated in that, to ask your input on recognitions, adult recognitions, and also volunteer services, how we can make all of that better for you. We had record numbers in attendance at Recognition of Excellence. Not only in attendance, but in awards as well. Again, Brandy, the program queen, had so many people that we had to figure out a way to accommodate everybody, all the families. We had 300, we gave 302 bronze awards. Seventy, yes. 77 silver, 11 11 gold. 74 graduating seniors who are now alums. So, they're joining as an adult next year. Yes, yes. And scholarships were awarded. The Alcoa Scholarship to Amber Barron. Our Cornelia Benton Scholarships were awarded to several girls. 22 adults were honored with council-level awards. There was a 50-year membership pin given to Connie Gates, two 35-year membership pins, one to Marge Zipcar and one to Lily Smith. We also had the distinct honor of awarding the Bronze Cross Life Saving Award to two sisters here in Utah, Alexa and Hannah Hammonds, who literally saved each other's life. This is given to Girl Scouts who save a life or attempt to save a life at the risk of their own life. And it's only been given one other time here at Girl Scouts of Utah, in 90 years. So, that's pretty great. Congratulations to them. That was an amazing day. If you walked out of there not being inspired about the great work we're doing, you must have fallen asleep because, oh, it was wonderful. We heard from all 11 girls. They all spoke about their projects. It was, it was an amazing day. Our membership numbers are holding strong. We are one of the few councils in the country who are ahead over last year. Yay. There's lots of enticements for your reregistration, special patches, special opportunities. So, get that going while you can. Resident camp is open. There was eight inches of snow yesterday at Cloud Rim. Yeah, yeah. Erin and Deb Taft and Alex went up this morning so Deb could tour. And, you know, the girls had a little sleepover in the lodge and had the fire going. How fun is that? Better than sleeping in the platform tents when there's eight inches of snow. Yeah. So, there's, over the summer, there'll be over 70 sessions in progress. Many of them still have available spots, if any of you know girls that are interested. There's over 1,200 girls currently registered for camp programs at both camps. Project Architecture. Wow. If you haven't heard about this, and the new buildings, the new cabins that were just recently built at Tree Foil Ranch, was a great collaboration from the beginning to the end with the University of Utah School of Architecture and Girl Scouts of Utah, led by Lisa Harden, designing and building three cabins with a very unique construction technique, using, only the third time, this environmentally friendly building method has been used in Utah, using interlocking pine beetle wood. I don't know what that is, but it's really good. It's a really good thing. I have pictures. I have pictures. The College of Architecture is receiving two distinguished awards for this, for this great work that we did with them. One for the Collaborative Practice Award and the Diversity Achievement Award. You know, congratulations to Lisa and everyone that worked on that. But really, the true winners are our girls that are going to be staying in these beautiful cabins. So, if it snows at Tree Foil Ranch, they won't care. They'll be inside. They'll be inside. July 30th is the ribbon cutting. I hope all of you will be there. They're incredible. I've only seen the pictures. I can't wait to go and see in person how great they turned out. So, I'm almost done. I'm almost done. Discover, Connect, and Celebrate with our annual meeting and our, our new version of Leadership Summit will be August 23rd at the Salt Palace. How great will it be to be in the Salt Palace and get the sneak preview of this beautiful venue where we'll be hosting our once-in-a-lifetime opportunity? Who doesn't want to be there? And I think it's less than 16 weeks, Lisa? Are you? Yeah. Less than 16 weeks for the once-in-a-lifetime opportunity in Utah. Are you gonna be there? I, you know, if you, all of your questions about convention and the many ways you can become involved, I hope you have them all ready. We have the experts here to answer them. You know, the spotlight will be on Utah. Everybody will know about Girl Scouts. There won't be one person that comes up to you at the next cookie sale and says, "I didn't know there were Girl Scouts in Utah." They're gonna know. They are going to know. Abigail, could you join me up here, please? Abigail is going to join me to introduce our guest. As CEO of Girl Scouts of the USA, Ana Maria Chavez is the first woman of color to lead the nation's largest leadership development organization for girls. She is also leading the charge for gender-based, gender-balanced leadership across all sectors of society. Prior to Ana's leadership roles with Girl Scouts, she spent years serving her country and the people of Arizona, holding positions in both national and state government under two Arizona governors. She has been recognized as been, as one of the 100 women leaders in STEM by STEM Connector. She is the recipient of the 2013 Excellence in Community Service Award from the Mexican-American Legal Defense and Educational Fund, as well as the 2013, I'm going to not say this right. Okay. It's a very cool award. A Girl Scout, since the age of 10, Ana understands the lifelong impact of Girl Scouting and the responsibility we all share in advancing girls' causes. So, Abigail.
It is my pleasure to introduce Ana Maria Chavez, our awesome CEO of the Girl Scouts.
Thank you. Good evening, Girl Scouts! I also want to say hello to all the Girl Scouts who are watching live all across Utah. Thank you for joining us this evening. I just want to let you to know that we, I'm just gonna say a few words, and then, actually, we're gonna take questions, not only from the audience in the room today. We also received questions from people who are watching. And I also think some girls have some questions this evening. So, what I wanted to do was just spend a little time letting you know what's happening at the national and global level with Girl Scouts and what's gonna happen here in October. All right? So, we'll get started. I've already been introduced. My name is Ana. And I am proud and honored to be your 19th CEO of Girl Scouts of the USA. Who was at, at the convention in Houston a few years ago? Who was there? Yeah, raise your hand. Come on! Be proud! We were there. So, for those of you who were in Houston, you've heard my story. Y'all met my family, right? For those of you who don't know my background, I grew up in a very, very small rural community called Eloy, Arizona. I thought it was the epicenter of the universe when I was growing up. And I've been proven right. It is the most amazing community, about 4,000 people on a good day. And there weren't a lot of things going on for girls at the time. But my best friend, Lisa Murdock, came to 3rd grade one day and said, "I'm gonna be a Girl Scout." And that's when I got this brilliant idea that that had to be my, my thing. And so, I joined, and I had some life-changing experience. I went to camp for the first time in Mount Lemon in Tucson and decided at the age of 12 that through Girl Scouts, I had gotten my voice. And I wanted to represent other people and make sure their voices were heard. So, I put myself on a path to become a lawyer and have spent my entire career as a public servant. First, working for President Clinton in Washington DC at the White House. And then, going back home to Arizona to work for the first of two female governors of Arizona, the last being Janet Napolitano, who went on to be your Homeland Security Secretary. By the way, Ms. Janet is a lifetime member of Girl Scouts, was a Girl Scout girl mem, yes, thank you. Until she was 18 in New Mexico, did wider ops, has been to our chalet, a great endorser of our program. But most importantly, what people don't realize is that she is among many, many women leaders in this country who are part of our amazing movement. If you look in Washington today, 70% of the women serving in the US Senate are Girl Scouts. More than 50% of the women serving in the US House are Girl Scouts. Almost every single woman who's flown in space is a Girl Scout. You look at any of the female governors, including my former governor, Girl Scout, okay? 70% of women who own their own business were Girl Scouts, absolutely. And so, we know that we've played a major role in the United States and abroad. We found out, literally, just a couple of years ago, that we have 59 million living Girl Scouts. Yes! 59 million! I had the opportunity to go share that piece of information with a very important gentleman a few years ago because I had gotten in the mail the Boy Scout Annual Report. They're very nice. I'm on their mailing list. Very nice of them. And I noticed that on an annual basis, the Boy Scouts go to the President to share with him the state of boys in the United States. So, I turned to my friends in New York and said, "So, when are we going?" And they're like, "Well, we don't really go on an annual basis." I'm like, "We're gonna start that, we're gonna start that visit." So, I did, and I went, and I took, actually, some Gold Award recipients that year. And I said, "Mr. President, are you aware of the highest award in Girl Scouting? It's called the Gold Award." And I also presented him with a brand-new report that had just come out of our amazing Girl Scout Research Institute. And it was talking about what our Girl Scouts are doing in this country. Again, I told him that we have 59 million alum. One in two American women wore our sash during her lifetime. And if you compare our Girl Scouts to women who weren't Girl Scouts, you'll notice that they're actually outperforming other women. First of all, they went on and had a higher level of educational attainment. They went on, they got their BA, their MBA, their PhD, their JD. They also are volunteering more in their local community. We went so far as actually to look at the mothers who are Girl Scout alums, and they're volunteering more in their children's schools than non-alum. We also found that they're making more money per year. Now, that's a good thing because they're bringing, on average, $12,000 more into their family home to provide resources to their children and their extended family. In addition, we asked them, you know, "Are you happy with the decisions you made in life?" And interestingly enough, our Girl Scouts, with the confidence they got being a Girl Scout, made some really critical decisions throughout their lifetime, about their path, about their partnerships, what they ended up doing in their life. And they're very satisfied. And fifth, and most importantly, Mr. President, they vote, and they vote often. At which point, he bends over and he said, "How many alum do you have again?" Yeah, yeah. So, we know our history, right? We know all the amazing things. So, what are we doing to ensure that everybody on this planet understands the impact that our movement has had? And most importantly, how can they engage with this today to ensure that 100 years from now, from 100 years from now, we have a room full of Girl Scouts leading the way again, right? Because unfortunately, when I started as your national CEO, I was dealt some cards, right? With the reality that our membership had been down for almost 10 years, okay? Much like the Boy Scouts, much like most youth-serving organizations in this country today. And so, I understood that this was our opportunity because I'm a woman that's glass half-full. You know, I see a problem, I'm like, "That's, that's an opportunity. That's an opportunity." Because you know what? When you call on Girl Scouts, they lead. So, for the last two and a half years, I've had the honor of traveling all over the country, doing town halls, meeting with state leaders, religious leaders, you know, individuals who have the power to make things happen in a local community. And normally, what I hear when I meet with these individuals is, "Wow, I had no idea that membership was down. I just assumed, you know, Girl Scouts was growing. It's such a great program." And what I also found out is that we actually have waiting lists of girls across the country who want to be Girl Scouts. Let me say that again, ladies and gentlemen. We have waiting lists of girls who want to be Girl Scouts. Can you imagine Ms. Abigail not being able to be a Girl Scout? That would be travesty in the making, right? But here's the reality. We can't engage enough adults to become a volunteer. What I've also heard from our current volunteers, "Well, Ana, you gotta make it easier." Right? Because on the national average, if you volunteer for another organization, on average, we ask or they ask for 80 hours of your time per year. Now, I would think in this room alone, you're probably spending 300 hours a year volunteering for an organization. So, there's a disconnect, right? I also understand, having been part of a local council staff, that one, many of you are wearing two or three different volunteer hats, right? Come on, let's shake our heads now. Come on, we're gonna talk the truth tonight, right? Also, we're very paper-driven. We like forms in Girl Scouts. Right? In duplicate. Because you never know when you're gonna need that third copy. Right? Absolutely. Absolutely. So, how do we make it easier? How do we bring new volunteers in? How do we make it easier for our current volunteers? Well, there's a little thing called technology. Rumor has it, it hit the United States a few years ago. Yeah. The girls have been living in that technology since the day they were born. They are called digital natives, right? Yeah, let's say together, digital natives. Okay. So, for those adults like myself, which at times, I have to turn to my 12-year-old, Michael Christopher, and say, "Michael, you gotta explain this because I don't understand." He's like, "Ma." So, we had to figure out a way of taking this 100-year organization and really bringing it into the 21st century. And we had to do that through technology. So, let me tell you a few things that are already on the plate, about to be served up for the movement. So, a year and a half ago, I looked around, and I, you know, I live in New York. For those of you who haven't been to your headquarters, it's in Midtown, okay? And we have a few floors there. And so, I was searching the halls because I was thinking, "There has to be a Chief Information Officer "There has to be a Chief Information Officer hidden somewhere at GSUSA." Come on now, right? Where is that technology person that I know is going to be my strategist? Well, there wasn't one. So we went out and we hired the first CIO in 100 years for Girl Scouts. And she's a fabulous lady. You'll meet her. She'll come to Utah for convention. You can't miss her. She's British, okay? Her name is Maggie Miller. And basically, what she has done, co-designing with local councils across the country, is we've created the first technology foundation for our movement. It's a beautiful thing. And what we've done is we've started actually to build upon that platform to bring you resources you need. So we all know, and I was sharing this with your council staff today, we were kind of laughing about this, but we know, you know, I've done a recruitment event, right? I've gone to an elementary school, you know, first of all, we've been doing recruitment the same way, you know, for 50 years, right? We do our little, you know, little pamphlet thing, you know, our little thing, and then we go to the school and we hope and pray, you know, that the superintendent's going to allow us to, you know, give our little brochures out, and then we hope and pray that the principal's going to give it to, you know, to the teacher. We hope and pray that those teachers find those little things, and they stick them in the, in the girls' backpacks, and we just hope those girls bring it home. And if that works, you know, we're hoping they'll show up at a recruitment event. And then the mothers and the fathers come, thinking they're going to sign up, and then we lock the door. Right? Yeah, yeah. We say, "No, come on in, well, your daughter could be..." But you have to be a volunteer, right? Okay, so then we get you in, and we hope that through that process, at least three months later, you've been registered, you've gone through the background checks, you've done all your training, right? Because although you just wanted to be a first-year Brownie troop leader, no, 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 no. You've got to take advanced courses in every single subject we know in Girl Scouts, right? Well, that, I'm here, and that's not really working well. What do you think? Nah. All right. So through technology, what we've done, and we've already, a council has already gone through the process, they've already kicked the tires in the system, because what we decided to do is stop creating things in New York and actually come out to the field and figure out who's really doing the best things in Girl Scouting. And what we found in River Valleys in Minnesota was that they were already creating this new volunteer system through technology. So all we did was invest in their creation. And what that does, the first part, the first thing we built on this new technology foundation was actually a way to recruit new volunteers. It's very simple. Basically, you go to a recruitment event. We need two pieces of information. We need your name and your email address. It immediately gets put into a system called Salesforce. The next day, within 24 hours, you get an email. "Kelly, thank you so much for agreeing to volunteer. Here, we're going to make it really simple for you. Click, you're now a member of Girl Scouts. Thank you for registering. Click, you've just done your background check, your security check. Hmm, we've got you through. And here's a menu of options in your local council in which to volunteer." Because working with some councils, they've uploaded all the volunteer opportunities in that council. So if Kelly wants to volunteer, but you know, she can only do it every other Wednesday in Salt Lake, so she looks, and she sees all the troops that are currently being actually filled. She can see actually the number of girls in that troop already. She can see that they have one co-troupe leader, they need another. They actually need a, you know, a cookie leader in that particular troop. She can click on that. All of a sudden, it then puts her into another screen where she then begins her training to be that co-troupe leader of a Brownie troop in Salt Lake City. Then, interesting enough, she gets through that process, it's now August. She is about to take off in her new leadership experience in Girl Scouts. She gets another email. "Kelly, congratulations, you're about to start that Girl Scout year. Here's what we would recommend for your first meeting as a Brownie troop leader." It has different options, the different badges, the different pieces of journeys that you can work on together. Oh, interesting! It gives you actually a shopping list for your first troop meeting. It then immediately populates an email with all the email addresses of all the adults of the girls in your troop to let them know about this meeting that's coming up. It also will populate the Outlook calendars for your volunteers in your troop and your parents. This is coming. Actually, we have a whole host of councils that are actually going on this system this summer. We actually predicted that we probably would get 10 councils that would sign up to be part of our first cohort. We got so many, we've got 40 in the queue. So, thank you. Now, I will tell you, and having sat in rooms with volunteers who've seen this, you know, and even just seen videos of what's possible in this, I think it will, you know, it will change the way we volunteer in our organization. It will make it easier for that working mom, for that working dad, for that working aunt raising that niece. You know, you're working two jobs. The only time you have is when you put your husband and your children to bed, and it's 11 o'clock at night. Now you have time to actually read about what you need to do with your Girl Scout troop. We're trying to make it easier. We really are, and we're trying to listen to what really will have an impact for you and our movement. And most importantly, I know who my boss is, and it's the girls. I'm very clear about that, right? Because at the end of the day, why are we here? We're here because they should have every opportunity in their life to do whatever they want to do, right? If their passion is in the arts, if they want to go to medical school, if they want to be a religious leader in their community, that should be their option, right? So for us at your national organization, we're doing everything, everything to ensure that we are customer-facing. Every system, every service, every product coming out of GSUSA should be something that's making your life easier, that it's making the dreams of these girls come true. So let's talk about next steps. What does that mean for our movement? Well, first, we're going to need you to be our brand ambassadors. We need you to get out there. You know, you've got an amazing group of leaders here. Debbie, who has taken on this leadership role as your interim CEO, we couldn't be happier to be working with her. And of course, Erin, your fabulous board chair, thank you for your leadership, and all the other board chair, excuse me, board members who are here. I have to let you in on a secret, however. We heard about the great things happening here in Utah, and as we were putting together the slate for our new national board, we knew we needed somebody from Utah to represent you. So in a few days, secret, secret notice, that we're going to be sending out actually an announcement of the individuals who have been asked to serve at our national board level. It is our slate that you will vote on as delegates at convention in Utah. And on that slate, as part of our new national board, I am pleased to announce that Debbie Nielsen will be on that slate representing Utah. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and open, because I know there are questions. You can tell, I'm very passionate about our movement. It changed my life. Some people would say it saved my life. I am here to give back to this amazing movement. It is our responsibility here in Utah to start the clarion call around our movement. Yeah, we may have had a few bad years, but we're done with that. There's no looking back, there's nothing but future for us. And what is that going to take? It means galvanizing our troops. It means that your leadership members here from GSUSA, wave, come on now, team, they're here. We wanted to show you that it is a new day. It is no longer councils and GSUSA, right? Or council versus volunteers, or whatever it may have been in the past. This is a new day, because this is our opportunity. This is our leadership moment, and we're going to take it, aren't we? All righty, so let's go ahead, and we're going to take some Q and A. I got to tell you, you've got some amazing young ladies who are going to help us with the microphones. We have a microphone right up here. I'm going to, there's another microphone, where's it at?
It's right here.
Okay, right there. We're going to actually pull the lights up just a bit so I can see your beautiful faces. Yes, and I see a hand back there.
I'm going to start when we're going to get rid of the green and black.
Okay, we're really going to talk tonight, aren't we? All right, all right. So thank you. What is your name?
Karen.
Karen, thanks for that question. So thank you for bringing it up, because I hear this consistently as I go out. Let me tell you a few things. My predecessor and the team at GSUSA, actually working with volunteers across the country, made really critical decisions back in 2005, 2006, when they clearly saw the writing on the wall. You know, we got to a moment in our movement where we saw that our membership numbers were going down, and we clearly had to do something different. If we continued on this trail, unfortunately, as your National CEO, my job would be to basically mothball Girl Scouts, and we weren't going to do that. So back in 2005, 2006, your national board made a decision to do several things, including realigning councils across the country, from over 300 of them down to 112. In addition, they knew that they had to update our girl program, and through that process, they created a Girl Scout leadership experience, that if a girl experiencing all these amazing things in Girl Scouts would eventually see that they had gained amazing experiences, right? In addition, in order to get that Girl Scout leadership, there were components that needed to be used to actually deliver that Girl Scout leadership experience. The journeys are only one part of that. Now, interestingly enough, when I came to the national office, I did hear a lot about it. I actually did journeys in San Antonio, so I've been on the grassroots level. There were mixed reviews. So we actually asked our Girl Scout Research Institute, which is actually one of the finest research institutes in the country for youth. We recently convened a White House summit around girl research, and one of the first things I asked them to do is look at the journeys, really what's there. And we did a research study, and what we found was, when we trained our volunteers on how to execute and how to actually use the journey with girls, and then we compared that troop to a troop where we didn't train the volunteers, interesting things happened. When we rated the girls at the end of their troop year on their experience and whether or not they would come back, the troop where the volunteers had been trained on journeys, actually, we found that Girl Scouts loved their experience, and actually, we had a high retention rate with those girls. But when we compared it to the troop where the volunteers hadn't been trained on journeys, we didn't see those same results. So what we found through that study is one thing, we needed to do a better job of training our volunteers with journeys. In addition, we actually went out and asked, "So talk to us about journeys." And what we've heard clearly throughout the movement is, "Don't pull the journeys. We need to do tweaks around it, we need to do different things, we need to do better training, we need to digitize some of that programming." But ultimately, we need to see this through around journeys, because it's only one piece of the Girl Scout leadership experience. I welcome you to look up this research study, we'll send it to your team here so you can really see what's going on. But I hope that actually you see, as we bring in this new girl programming opportunities, that again, it's bigger than journeys. There's outdoor activities, there are other things through our 136 badges that we do with girls today that's going to do great things in their lives. But thank you for that question.
We love journey!
Question right there? See if we can get a microphone.
I have a question along the same lines as your journey. Is whether we're going to, or are they going to introduce an outdoor journey?
It was, being an outdoor program special, it was a very sad day to lose our boating and our horseback riding and our outdoor badges.
Yeah, so that's a, that's a good question. And part of what we want to do here in Utah, especially around convention, I got to tell you something, I'm a little baffled at times when I hear that we've kind of gone away from our roots around outdoors and Girl Scouts. Because I got to be honest, we've been green and outdoors for 102 years, right? Actually, the largest base of assets we have in our movement, we've got about $1 billion in property across our movement. We're close to the Catholic Church. Okay? We are! And here's what you're not hearing, and I'll get to your question about journeys and outdoors. There's a point here somewhere. Is that there is a perception, based on some camp sales across the country, that we are moving away from camps. The reality is not this. We're actually doing a study at the national level around camps in councils, and what we're finding is, in situations where they are having to sell a camp because through realignment, now they have 15 camp properties, and they just don't have the financial base to support all these camps, that they're actually taking those camp sales and reinvesting it back in the other camps, okay, to upgrade them. In addition, we really don't talk about our camps. Let me give you a case in point. When I was in San Antonio, we had two beautiful camps, but literally, it got to the point where our girls didn't want outdoor activities. If it didn't have a TV remote and air conditioning, they weren't going to do it, all right? So this is kind of the struggle we're in, right? You're shaking your head, okay, come on now, let's talk. Because I have a 12-year-old, you know, he thinks camping is going to hotel with no room service. Okay? So there is a disconnect, because I listen to girls. I do. I sit down with them, I had a kitchen cabinet in San Antonio, and they heard, I listen, "Why don't you go to camp?" I literally could only fill one of my camps two weeks a year, but I had a camp ranger out there, I had program aides, right? So to a certain point, you look at what you're investing, right, and what, why aren't the girls going? Well, first of all, we're competing with other entities who have camps. The whys, right? A lot of religious organizations have camps. We don't market them very effectively. So even if you're a parent looking for those opportunities, you're looking to sign them up in January for June, right? Well, when we got, I think, in some terrible times financially, we cut out a lot of the marketing budgets in our councils, right? So the first things that went, the brochures, the glossy brochures that we use to mail. So what can we do at the national level to tell our story? Well, you have amazing properties here. I'm hearing stories, I can't wait to get to Cloud Room. Yeah, man! Imagine girls in Arizona, or New York, you know, or in Florida, that actually, through technology, if we had something that showed, showcased these amazing camp properties, don't you think girls would want to come to Utah to experience your camp? So I will tell you, working with my fabulous partner, Connie Lindsay, who's your national board president, she and I decided, you know, we've got to generate a discussion around outdoors and Girl Scouts. We got to talk about it. As a family, we need to hash through what are the issues. And so what you're going to see here in Utah at convention is actually a discussion around outdoors. You're going to hear about what we've been doing, not only at the national level, but what councils have been doing across the country and what we've been doing globally. Through that process, I will give you a hint, you're going to see some programming and some new opportunities around outdoors and girls and Girl Scouts. I don't want to, I don't want to give out everything here tonight, because I want you to come to convention, all right? All right? So we'll let you in on what's happening in October in Utah.
Hello.
Hi. What's your name?
So I'm the mother, I'm Melissa.
Hi, Melissa.
And I'm the mother of a girl with severe food allergies, who's never been able to taste a cookie. Are there any plans for gluten-free and/or dairy-free, and hopefully both, cookies in the works?
Well, I'm going to make a public confession here tonight. I've never done this before, but I'm gluten and dairy-free. So yeah, I mean, I find it really hard, right? But what I'm seeing is that more institutions are actually doing more menus around gluten and dairy-free. And for those of you who see me sneak a cookie now and then, okay, I have a bad day sometimes, you know, I have to have a cookie. But here's the reality, we actually have tested all sorts of cookies over the years. We've tested sugar-free. We've tested all sorts of different ingredients. We actually, in market last year, had a gluten-free cookie. I was carrying it around in my purse. "Have a gluten-free Girl Scout cookie." It was lovely. It didn't sell. It didn't sell. And so what happens is, you know, our bakers in partnership, because we have two bakers in the country who make Girl Scout cookies, Little Brownie and ABC. And ABC, who's not in your market, created that Girl Scout gluten-free cookie this past cookie season, and what they found, the sales were not high. And it was our market test, right? We needed to see, would consumers buy it? What we have found is that people buy our cookies because of the memories, right? It's an indulgent opportunity for them, and they like certain flavors. Our number of flavor, can you guess it?
Thin mint.
It's the thin mint, closely followed by our Simones or caramel delight, right? And so for us, we're always looking to tweak and to understand what the consumers will buy, but clearly, in certain instances, they're not buying these wonderful creations. We're going to see what happens. I will tell you, I'm pushing really for some healthy alternatives in our cookie sale, so that's coming, but it also has to make business sense for our bakers. And that's kind of where we get to, you know? If they've continued to lose money through our cookie sale, because our cookie sales have been down, how do we make it, you know, affordable, but also lucrative for them to be in partnership with us? So keep your fingers crossed, you'll know you have an advocate at GSUSA around it, and we'll continue to look at that.
And about to the outdoor issue.
Can you introduce yourself tonight?
I'm Kathy. I am a delegate for the troop oil community. With the outdoor issue, is it also going to, and I know you don't want to give out a lot of information right now, but will it also get us back to more of the basics of Girl Scouting, teaching the girls survival skills and stuff of that nature?
Yes. That, you know, okay, I'm going to be a little biased. There are few things I get to do as your National CEO. I'll be honest. But one of the things I really want to do is introduce the girls back into nature.[1775.12] This is... You know, to me, it is a health issue. This is the first generation of children that are being raised indoors, right? And I made a confession earlier with your team here, you know, I gotta admit, I follow my son around, you know, with the Kleenex things, and wiping his hands, and, "Oh, don't get dirty," you know, "Don't scratch your legs," and, "Oh, no, 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 no." And I'm always has my eye, you know, I'm always looking out for him. My husband, on the other hand, is, "Let him go, let him be a child, let him have fun," you know, "Climb some trees." So for us, is how do we create an environment where we can get girls back outdoors? You know, it's so, so important. I think we can do that through our amazing properties, I think that's clear. I think we can do it programmatically, on our focus areas, and what we do and what we invest in. I think we need some key national funders to help fund programs nationally around this. We need to reclaim that space. And personally, I've been outdoors with girls, they love it, you know, they really do. We just need to reengage them in these opportunities. So it's coming, it's coming. So at this time, I know that we have questions from people who are streaming live. Can we go to some of those questions?
Thank you. So one of the questions we had come in, as you know, with Girl Scouts, sometimes we have some controversial issues, and...
No!
One of the questions is, please explain the partnership that we have with Mattel and Barbie.
Absolutely. So, you know, several things, and yes, we have a partnership with Mattel. I actually called the CEO of Mattel a few months ago, and I'm gonna give you some background history. We've actually been in partnership with Mattel a long time. You have to remember that every major corporation is based somewhere in this country. Mattel happens to be based in Los Angeles, and they have been huge, huge supporters of your Girl Scouts in greater Los Angeles, okay? They have been the keeper of that relationship, they have funded Girl Scouts continuously, they're great programmatic partners. So we decided to actually partner with them last year, and they created an amazing program for our younger girls. And it was all about career exploration, career exploration. And we were funded at a $2 million level, where we actually provided programming opportunities to councils across the country. We printed actually the program books that have the great patch that girls can earn, thinking that these program guides would last at least three years, four years. They were gone in like eight months. It is literally the most popular patch program we've had in Girl Scouts in recent history. Girls love Barbie. They love Barbie! And I will tell you, I had a Barbie! I love Barbie!
Me too.
Okay. So here's, here's the thing, and we have a Barbie coming out! All right? Now, I will tell you to hold that news, because an announcement will be coming out, but I want to be very honest with you, we will probably get pushback around this particular partnership. We got it earlier in the year. And for me, you know, I did call the CEO of Mattel to have a conversation about our brands, and ensuring that he understood that anything he did with his brand did have an impact on us. But I also believe, as leaders, that once we have an agreement, and we set out key principles around that agreement, as leaders, we need to stand by our partners. I can't tell you how many people have called me when they've heard certain things about our brand, that allegedly, we're in bed with certain organizations, and they call us bad names, and they say we're rotten to the core. Well, I look around, and I watch who stands with us and who distance themselves from us. I think we have an opportunity to emulate leadership qualities for our girls, that when bad times happen, that we stand in our decisions, that when our partners, you know, unfortunately get criticism, that we ask the right questions, that we do push our partners to do the right things. But once we make a decision to be in a partnership, we stand strong in that partnership. Because when we stop standing for things we believe in, that's when we become weak as an organization. Now, I will tell you, the Barbie program was very popular, it was focused on our younger girls. Our girls wanted this program. It will continue, we will continue to have this patch program as long as we have program books, but we will continue to listen to our councils. We did, you know, get feedback from certain locations, and certain councils chose not to actually engage in our patch program. That's fine. That's the power of movement, you have that local decision. But I ask you, I implore you, that as Girl Scouts, understand that if you stand up and you negatively go out and say negative things about this partnership, I want you to understand that you're having an impact on a sister council in California, right? Let's understand that, we are family, we are intertwined, we are one brand. So please, understand that, again, this has been a very positive partnership for several of our councils across the country. We have other partnerships that have provided great opportunities for our girls. So there is a menu of choices. You don't have to pick everything on the menu, but please understand that at the national level, we will continue to ask those right questions, and we also have assembled an advisory council of CEOs to work with our national staff. Anytime now, we go into a licensing agreement, a brand agreement with another company, to ensure that we're getting the voice from the councils. So I want you to know you do have a voice at the table. Another question.
Do you want to ask one of the girls a question?
Sure, let's ask a girl.
Hi. We would like to know if there are any plans to make the GSUSA items in the USA.
So, interesting enough, I actually have a background in that. What's not in my bio is, one of the first jobs I had actually, as an attorney in Washington, was a contracts lawyer. My job was to actually review and opine on contracts that the US government went into. And I got very interested, actually, in supporting small businesses in this country. You probably didn't know, but small businesses actually employ one in four people in the United States. It's the lifeline. And I also noticed that, unfortunately, women-owned businesses weren't getting the same sort of support as other businesses. So I actually went back to Arizona, and one of the jobs I did was, I was the chief procurement officer for the largest state agency in Arizona. I oversaw about $600 million in services and products on an annual basis. And I got very focused on, again, this whole concept of supporting our local businesses. So at the national level, I started asking questions, you know, who do we buy our products from? And I did find that we actually do, because of pricing, right? We'd heard from our volunteers and our girls, that some things were too expensive. So in order to pass on savings to you, we were looking for other outlets. Well, what I will tell you here, that's another secret, I'm hoping that we're family, and then you'll keep some of these announcements secret, all right? Because I need an opportunity to announce them. Is that what you're gonna see is actually something that I've asked the team to do, is bring back our purchasing to the United States. So in August, you're gonna see that we're going to bring back our products. So the numbers you wear, right, in the front of your sashes, some of the really iconic emblems on your uniform are now going to be made here in the United States, right, outside of Baltimore. And it's actually going to be a program site for girls. But I truly believe, as one of the most iconic brands in the United States, we're all-American apple pie, we've got to go back to our roots. And our roots were in service to this country. Our job is to ensure that we, with our buying power, we do some great things. So in the near future, we will start bringing back our purchases back into the United States and employing Americans as well. Why don't we take a question from the audience? And of course, if you have any questions for your local CEO or your board chair, they're also here. I don't want to hog the platform up here. Yeah.
Hi, I'm Kami.
Hi, Kami.
And I love being a volunteer. My question is kind of going back to the Barbie patch that we have and the program available with that. I think we need more maybe information on what patches we have available with some of our partners that we have, because there's so many wonderful things out there that the girls need, that I think like Barbie, and Dove, and misfit socks, I mean, great things out there that we need to be more aware of, that we have available to us.
No, you're right. Actually, I think we're gonna be able to do that, really, through technology. One of the other services that we are doing at GSUSA, we're trying to make it easier on you and your local council. So one of the things we're doing is actually, we are now hosting and offering to host your websites for secure reasons. And we're also designing, helping you design them, so we have one brand messaging across the country. I think through, again, through technology, we'll be able to actually showcase all the amazing partnership and program opportunities for girls across the country. So that's coming, you know, we'd love your input and how to design what that looks like. Because I truly believe, if you have a creative partnership here in Utah, funded by a local corporation or partner, that we should be able to share that information in Baltimore, or in Florida, or in Texas. So that's coming. But again, I think through technology, we'll be able to share that information easier.
Hi, Julie. I'm an intern leader at Future. And we talked before, but...
Yes.
Going back to that outdoor thing...
Yeah.
Are there any plans to open a new National Center West? Out here in the West, there is no Macy's, Savannah...
Yes.
...national headquarters, as you know, from growing up there.
Pennsley, Pennsley was closed years ago.
Yes, I heard that.
Any plans to open a new one?
Well, first of all, I think we need to, with your help, again, stabilize our membership, right? So one of the things you may, you probably are aware of, that our budget at GSUSA is based on membership dues, right? Cookie revenue stays locally. So as membership has been declining for 10 years, our revenue has been declining at GSUSA. So actually, we don't have the resources, even if we wanted to do something like that, to fund an amazing project like that. I think actually, the future is actually to really help the local councils actually enhance their properties and actually advertise it, so more girls can go to camps across the country. I think we need to focus there first. I also think we need to look at other organizations that have actually done a great job with their camp properties, whether it's the whys, whether it's actually, I was just talking to an organization, a gentleman who's invested a lot of time in looking at all the Jewish camps across the country. They were in the same situation a few years ago. So I think before we actually invest in a national property, I think we really need to shore up our local properties first. Yeah. Right here. Can we have a microphone for our young lady up here? It's coming.
Okay, my question is for Miss Debbie Nielsen.
Oh, great.
Okay, so are there any plans in the future to open up a new camp in Utah?
Ah, I don't think so. We have two amazing camps that... Camp Cloud Room just expanded in size as of a year ago. 236 acres. We are going to, we've had some conversations about how we're going to use that property, what we're going to do there, you know, there's all kinds of things on the table. It will take some money, it will take some partnerships, and it'll take a lot of work, but we will certainly enhance both of our camps much more, you will see, over the next few years. And the new cabins at Tree Foil Ranch are a great example of how we'll be able to use our facilities more throughout the year. So I think our focus will be on enhancing the camps we have. I know the people down south would love to have something, but we hope it'll be so much fun to come up here to Cloud Room in Tree Foil Ranch, that they'll make the trek. Thanks for the question.
Hi, Anna, thanks for being here and being so secretive and open with us.
Because we're open, you know my staff is over there going, "I can't believe she just..." But I trust you all, we're family!
Absolutely.
Sure!
So I'm curious a little bit about the national campaign, like Ban Bossy.
Yes.
Can you talk to us a little bit about how that came to be?
Sure.
The research, is there plans for future campaigns like the Ban Bossy campaign?
Thank you for, your name again?
Oh, sorry, April Stevenson.
April, nice to meet you, April. Who's heard of Ban Bossy? Yes, right. So let me tell you a little bit about that. You know, working, working hard at GSUSA in partnership with councils, clearly, it's interesting. I'm a Girl Scout, I'm proud to be a Girl Scout. I think everybody in the world should know about us, right? But to my surprise, people haven't heard about Girl Scouts in a while, in certain segments of our populations across the country, which is shocking, right? And so I was sitting there one day, and I get a call, cold call, I'll be honest, from a woman by the name of Sheryl Sandberg. You know Sheryl? Okay. Sheryl Sandberg is the COO of Facebook. Girls know Facebook, right? So Sheryl's a Girl Scout, she's an alum, her daughter's a Girl Scout in the San Francisco area, and she wrote a book a few years ago called Lean In. Heard that book, Lean In? Lean In, yeah. So she wrote it, and she was really thinking about how to partner with an organization to really do the same thing for girls. How do we get girls to lean in? Because what we have found in Girl Scouts, that actually, girls stopped leaning in to leadership roles by fourth grade. They stopped raising their hands, they stopped asking questions, they stopped volunteering to be a leader of their organization in school. And that's a travesty. So she and her team at the Lean In Foundation scanned the country to see what organization had the size, scale, history, experience, reputation, and brand to be able to really talk about girl leadership in a way that was meaningful and that people would believe in. Well, guess what? She found the Girl Scouts. We're the best of the best, right? When it comes to girl leadership, we've been doing it for 102 years. So she called me, cold called me in New York City, and I answered my phone, because I do that once in a while. She's the sugar in my team. And it was Sheryl, she's like, "Hey, Anna, my name's Sheryl Sandberg, I'd love to partner with you." And I'm like, "Hey, Sheryl, how's it going? How's that Lean In going?" And she's like, "Well, interesting that you should ask that." And she started talking about what she wanted to do. I said, "Sheryl, here's the thing, we've been doing this for a long time, we are the experts, you came to the right people." But we knew that we needed to create a public service campaign to really talk about the negative messages that we give girls on a daily basis in this country and around the world. So we created a campaign, public service campaign, called Ban Bossy. And we created toolkits for parents, educators, individuals who work with girls, to stop actually using words that discourage girls from leading. And one of the main words is bossy, okay? How many of you have been called bossy in your lifetime? Okay? All right, a lot of women. How many of you have been called bossy last week? Okay. All right. What's interesting, and I've done my own scientific tests, right? I'm raising a 12-year-old boy, and I'm helping to raise 2 million girls. And what I have found with Michael Christopher, it is just assumed that he's gonna be a leader. It is assumed that he's gonna do certain things. I have worked with girls and women all my life, and I spend half my time convincing girls and women that they can do something, right? I can't tell you how many women I've talked to who say to me, "Well, I couldn't do that." "Why not?" "Oh, I don't have enough experience." I'm like, "Wait a minute. You've had 10 years in this field, you're working on your PhD, you've mentored how many people, and you still don't think you're qualified?" "Oh, no, no." Because what we found is that actually, women are promoted based on experience, and men are promoted based on potential, right? And that starts really early. We tell girls really interesting messages. So the whole concept of Ban Bossy was, let's galvanize adults around this message. So Sheryl and I, and this amazing Girl Scout called Condoleezza Rice, you may have heard about her. She's Condi, Tamina. She's cool. She was a Girl Scout in Birmingham, Alabama, yeah. She was elected as president of her family for about 10 years running, yeah. She's really cool. So we went out there, and you know, it was, it was, it was a hit. Little-known secret, when Lean In did their thing with their book, they had a website, they got a million hits in a year. When we launched Ban Bossy, we got a million hits in 24 hours. That's the power of our brand, right? Yeah. So we're working, to answer your question, we're working on what's next, right? How do we continue this awareness? It's gonna take money, so I'm looking for funders. If you know anybody, send them my way. Because we have to be able to fight funding to the local councils to actually do programming around it, right? That's how we're gonna get the access and opportunity. So that's coming, and we're looking at other partnerships to really, again, raise our brand awareness in this country. Because we've tested it, and although it's a strong brand, it's the 16th strongest brand in this country, people aren't aware of what we do on a daily basis. There was a question up here? Yeah?
Were you a Girl Scout when you were a little kid?
Yeah, I was. I was a Girl Scout, I wore your uniform. It was very exciting. Actually, to be honest, I met you, what's your name again, Tammy? Yeah, my parents couldn't afford it. And in my troop, we could only afford one badge book, so we used to share it. So, one of the sad things is, I don't have a picture of me as a Girl Scout in uniform. So, we've been really sad about that. So, one of my dreams is that we raise enough money that any girl who wants to be a Girl Scout can be a Girl Scout, and any girl who wants a uniform gets a uniform.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm Jenna. I'm a program coordinator with Girl Scouts of Utah.
Yeah.
And I have a quick question about older-girl retention campaigns or anything like that. I know we have the I Can't Wait To for K-5 recruitment, so I was wondering if there's anything for older girls.
Yeah. It's a great question. So, let me talk you through the methodology and why we started our campaign. You've seen our campaign, right? I Can't Wait To. It's, I'm told, it's actually the first national membership campaign that we've done. And the reason was, call me, call me kind of crazy, but I think simply around issues. You know, as a lawyer, we're taught to spot issues, you know, do your research to create a solution. And I'm driven by data. And so, I looked, right? And I looked at, in San Antonio, right? And I looked to see, we had a council, a mid-sized council, 18,000 girls, right? 25% were teen girls. That's a big segment. But what I clearly found was, it was easier to keep the older girls when they started young, right? Rarely do we get girls joining Girl Scouts. It happens, and I'm glad it does, but normally, they join, you know, when they're a Daisy or a Brownie. And what I did see, looking nationally, our retention numbers actually were dropping exponentially with our younger girls. And if that's your foundation, if that's how you build your national movement on a foundation of younger girls, to create that pipeline of older girls, we've got to shore up our foundation. So, that was our first key initiative. I pulled together the national leadership, so all the CEOs of all the Girl Scout councils in the country. I pulled them together in Phoenix in March of 2012, and I said, "Ladies, we've got to do something about this. So, let's do this. Let's all focus, council to council, on K-5, recruiting volunteers for K-5, and girls for K-5. Let's shore up the pipeline, right? Once we get that stabilized, not forgetting the older girls, because they're incredibly important, but we're hemorrhaging right around the younger girls area. So, what do we do? So, we're now two years, we're going into a two-year campaign of I Can't Wait To, to see, are we making traction? And what we found, again, looking at data, where councils implemented, fully implemented I Can't Wait To campaign as their membership recruitment campaign last fall, they actually had a higher membership rate last year. They recruited more members, okay? We're now seeing through the tail end, right, of retaining, you know, early bird season, we're seeing that there's retention factor around the campaign. So, now, how do we get more councils to do the I Can't Wait To campaign? Well, we also heard from you very loudly, "GSUSA, stop changing campaigns every year," right? You keep throwing new campaigns every year, dah dah dah, you know? So, you're going to see very few campaigns, and you're, we're going to stick with campaigns. So, I Can't Wait To, second year, you're going to see it another year, probably another year after that. We're going to add tweaks. We're going to give you more tools around it. But what we're seeing is, it is helping. In those councils who are truly activating that campaign, we're seeing an impact. Yeah.
I have a question. How has your experience been as the...
What's your name?
Kendall. And how has your experience been as the GSUSA leader, and what has surprised you most about your job?
Can I sit down for that question? First of all, I've got to say, it's an amazing honor. An amazing honor. I, you know, people ask me, like, "What is it like to be, you know, the leader of GSUSA?" First of all, there's no I in team. This is the team. What I get to do is be a team leader, right? I get to hopefully inspire and activate not only your national team, but your national leadership and your volunteers, right? I look that my job is to be that ambassador of the brand. Get out there, talk about it. I think for me, the biggest surprise was, again, that with all the amazing opportunities, we are not galvanizing enough people to actually join Girl Scouts. Like, it's like the best-kept secret in the United States. That's been my biggest surprise. And for me, I think one of the most impactful situations for me was actually at the convention two and a half years ago in Houston, where, you know, I stood before movement and asked for your blessing, asked for your support. I was a new leader, you know, and that I was in it to win it, right? That I really felt that we could do this, working together. And what has not surprised me, but really inspired me, is that wherever I've gone, across the country, I've lost count, actually, how many councils I've been to, but there hasn't been one place in this entire country that I've gone to that people smile when we talk about Girl Scouts. They get excited, and they want to be part of what we're doing. So, for me, that's power. That's an opportunity, right? So, how do we do that? Because I can't be everywhere. I'd like to be, right? I'd like to fly around, talking to girls, right? But the reality is, I can't do it all. So, what is it going to take to empower you to go out there and talk about your experience and bring five more girls with you, right? What is it going to take to get adults in this room to go out tomorrow and recruit 10 more volunteers? What's it going to take, right? What can I do on a day basis? And so, what I feel sad about is that there are not more hours in the day, right? That I can't, I can't be everywhere. But what gives me joy is that I don't do it by myself. I have an amazing team at your national, these are your team members. I've got an amazing national board, soon to be joined by Debbie, and we're going to do great things together. Yeah. Oh! My question's right there. Right there. There's a Brownie who wants to ask a question.
I don't know.
Oh, wait, she needs the microphone.
I don't have her number.
Okay. She needs a microphone. Okay, hold on. I want them to make sure that they hear you. Tell me your name.
My name's Amelia, and what was your favorite thing in Girl Scouts?
So many things. I loved selling cookies. I was in Trip 304. And I loved selling cookies. And I loved going to camp. I loved going to camp. Although I got in real big trouble. I got in big trouble at camp. God, I'm giving you all of my stories here. Y'all keep this secret, right? And the people online, delete. So, I was 12, and my friends, they wanted me to shave my legs for the first time, and my mom told me not to, and I did it anyway. And I got home, and she's like, "Oh, Anna Maria! I shaved my legs, and it was all funky." And I got grounded. Next question? Abigail wants to say a question. And then, we'll go back here, because I know somebody's... And then, I think we need to go to the webcam online.
So, will there be any, like, backpacking things for, like, younger girls, like Brownies and things?
Yeah, why can't you do it now?
Yeah, but like, for some people, you can't go, like, backpacking until, like, a certain age, but why can't we do that? Like, at camp?
Okay, well, I was backpacking when I was your age. So, here's the thing. You know, I think as adults and as girls, we need to look at our programming, right? We need to look at certain things. Because as I talk to girls, right, they want to do adventure. And here's the thing, a little-known secret, older girls are going to Boy Scouts to be explorers, right, and adventurers, because they can go, and they can do these things. They can shoot guns, and they can do all these things, right? Right?
And fish.
And they can fish, right? And rock climbing, right? So, there has, we've got to figure that out, because, one, you've got to be safe. Number-one priority in Girl Scouts. Girls have to be safe. But we also have to listen to the girls, because it's Girl Scouts. Girl Scouts. And we need to understand what you guys want to do, right, with the permission of your parents, because your parents, right, at the end of the day, make a decision around safety and what you get to do. But we need to hear their voices. We need to understand what we're currently doing and what you guys will want to do, right? And I think that's an ongoing discussion.
I actually have a couple of comments.
What's your name?
Oh, Shante. And I just want to tell you, I thank you so much for being here. It's been a real pleasure to listen to you. And cookies, even though everybody complains about cookies, cookies are also my very favorite part of Girl Scouting. Always have been, always will be. And as far, I'm sorry, I have a couple of comments that I have to get out of the way first.
Okay.
As far as outdoor programming, a couple of years ago, I took some girls to, to a troop, my troop, to California, and we stayed at a property at the Girl Scouts of Greater Los Angeles. And we, as Girl Scouts in Utah, often don't realize what availability there is at properties outside of our council. And I think that part of that could be eliminated. I mean, in the rest of the world, it's become a small world online, but in Girl Scouting, you get this list of councils, and to find stuff, you have to go through every single one. And if there was a way to come under one umbrella, I think that that would be awesome. Okay, so, now that I've said all of my piece about that.
Okay.
My real, my real question is, as a Hispanic woman...
Yeah.
I'm wondering, are you putting forth any kind of initiative? I mean, I know that, you know, we all talk about Hispanic initiatives. I would like to see a Girl Scout website in Spanish.
It exists.
How come we don't have a link to it? How come we don't, I don't, I've never, I've looked for it and haven't found it.
Yeah. Yeah. So, thank you for that. First of all, I do want to introduce somebody who's in the audience today, who actually flew in to spend time with you. She's leading, actually, the discussion at convention with the team around outdoors. So, I want you to meet her. She's a fabulous woman, former CEO of a Girl Scout council. Her name is Vicki Wright. Where's Vicki?
Vicki.
Vicki, stand on up. So, Vicki came out of retirement, begrudgingly, because she's having a good time in retirement. And I said, "You know, we needed a leader who clearly understood outdoor, knew the history of the Girl Scout movement, and understood how to really have a discussion, and what did it look like going forward." Vicki, I don't know if you want to share any thoughts on where you are hearing issues around outdoor, what you, what you're sort of building as far as a platform at convention to talk about outdoors?
I guess I think one of the things, I was talking to somebody here tonight, right here, about this, about the outdoor initiative, and the interest out in the whole membership of wanting more emphasis in outdoors, or bringing back some of the things that we're talking about outdoors. And when we're talking about outdoors, we really are talking about the full scope of outdoors, from going to a hike in a city park, all the way to a kayaking trip, or a backpacking trip, or whatever it may be, a high adventure activity. And I think one of the things that, I'm here tonight to kind of hear what your questions might be around outdoors, and I think as we come together at the national council session, our discussion about what is it we want girls to get out of the outdoors as part of a Girl Scout experience is going to be really important for us to have, and help guide where we're going to go in the future. That it is so important for girls. So, if you have any thoughts about that, please, for you to come talk to me after the meeting, but I think it's going to be a very exciting conversation, and one that I think people are going to really enjoy.
And then, the favor I'm going to ask you is, at convention, to all sort of go to Vicki and say, "Vicki, you can't go back into retirement." We're going to work on that. Okay. I'm told, because of time, I'm here as long as you're here, but I'm told that we have space for two more questions. I will be here even after the program. If you want to come up and have a conversation about anything that's on your mind, I'll be here as long as you're here. So, we're going to take a question from the audience, and then, we're going to take a question from online. Those are my instructions. So, why don't we go to the audience for the last question in the audience? Is there a microphone for her?
I'm really loud, though.
Oh, there's a girl. There's a Brownie who wants to ask a question. I can't see. Is it blue? It's a Daisy.
Hi, my name is Lily. I'm a second-year Daisy, and I was wondering if you have any CEO patches that we can get afterwards for our best committee?
All right, that's my boss. Absolutely, I have patches. I'd be honored to give you a patch. Absolutely.
Let me, let me...
Oh, they're saying one more from the audience? Okay. All right. Yes, and a microphone over here for her? Want to hear her lovely voice?
Yeah, I'm loud. I can be really loud if you want.
Hi, I'm Kristy, and I'm part of the Gold Award Committee for GSU. And so, I would like to know what Girl Scouts is doing to make the Gold Award more known? We all know the Eagle Scout Award, but very few people, even amongst the Girl Scouts themselves, know what the Gold Award is.
Yep.
And how can we, what can we do?
So, let me give you some background on this, because this has also been just an amazing learning opportunity for me. First of all, unlike the Boy Scouts, we've changed the name of the highest award in Girl Scouting many times, right? So, my predecessor, the first, Julie Gordon Low, had the Golden Eaglelet, and we've had the Curve Bar, you know, we've had many different names. So, part of it is, we lost that marketing opportunity. When you change the names, the people, like, they don't understand. Also, we have been a very internally-focused organization. We are for service. We tend not to sort of brag about all the amazing things we're doing, right? That's how we're raised, right? To be in service. So, part of it is, we just don't talk about it. But here's the great news, glass half-full. The Gold Award, which, again, is the highest award in Girl Scouting, 6% of all girls on an annual basis earn a Gold Award, the 100th anniversary of our Gold Award is in 2016. Yes, 100 years. And so, this is an opportunity. So, what we're doing, and we're going to invest in this, is a national campaign around the Gold Award. That is an opportunity to educate the world around what our amazing girls are doing, you know, from Daisies all the way to the girls who earn the highest and most prestigious award in Girl Scouting. So, that's coming. We're going to need you to help on the, I need you to post it on Facebook and on Twitter. I need you to have house parties. I need you to put the bumper sticker on. I, I need your help. We got, because think about it, right? There's so many of us. We tell 10 friends, they tell 10 friends. We've got to use our grassroots network. In addition, what's also coming along with that, part of bringing back our alum, we've got 59 million, 59 million alum. If we brought 10% of them back, we could double our membership, right? What does that look like? So, for us is, we're going to use the opportunity of the 100th anniversary of the highest award in Girl Scouting to call people home. We're going to go first, after our Gold Award recipients, our Curve Bar recipients, right, our first-class Girl Scouts. That's who we're going to go after first, because we know who they are. It's easier. And for the first time ever, we've actually created the Gold Award directories. We now have the first. It was printed this past year, and it's actually a directory of all the Gold Award, again, going back as far as we have records, of all the women who have earned their highest I need you to put the bumper sticker on. I need your help. We've got-- Because think about it, right? There's so many of us. We tell 10 friends, they tell 10 friends. We've got to use our grassroots network. In addition, what's also coming along with that, part of bringing back our alum, we've got 59 million. 59 million alum. If we brought 10% of them back, we could double our membership, right? What does that look like? So for us is, we're going to use the opportunity of the 100th anniversary of the highest award in Girl scouting to call people home. We're going to go first after our Gold Award recipients, our Curve Bar recipients, right? Our first-class Girl Scouts. That's who we're going to go after first, because we know who they are. It's easier. And for the first time ever, we've actually created the Gold Award directories. We now have the first. It was printed this past year, and it's actually a directory of all the Gold Award-- Again, going back as far as we have records of all the women who have earned their highest award in Girl scouting. It was published for the first time. We hope it continues into the future, but that's part of what we're doing at the national level.
So we have some excited people online about convention. So in your opinion, what are the top two or three highlights that we will see? If you can narrow it down to that.
Oh, my goodness. I'm just so excited, right? Because you all are going to be there, right?[1505.03][1505.03](applause) And in my understanding, you have, what, 10,000 members, right, in Utah, right? So all 10,000 of you are going to be there, right?[1517.53][1517.53](audience cheering) Okay. Let's start with that. So you don't have to worry about hotel rooms, right?[1523.11][1523.11](laughter) You got it made. So part of it is, this is the first convention after a 100th anniversary, right? I think the 100th anniversary was a special year, right? It's all the pomp and circumstance and everything. But what we're also thinking about is, we just don't want convention to be an event, you know, and it just kind of goes away. We actually want it to be a continuum. So when we were planning this convention, we were already thinking about 2017 and 2020, because we, again, want it to be an experience. So I think what you're going to experience in Utah is that it's a time for us to come home. It's going to be a more internally focused convention, you know, for us to have some really good conversation about girls, about leadership, about faith, right? And so I'm excited about that. I'm also excited that we're going to bring our Girl Scouts from all over the world. You're going to see world delegations, right? So it's not just going to be here domestically. You're going to have an opportunity to engage with women and girls from all over the world, because that's the power of our movement. And of course, we're going to be electing a new slate with new board members. So that's going to be exciting, too.[1595.82][1595.82](laughter) So a lot to come. I encourage you to go to the convention site. A lot of great information. I'm told that actually this year was one of the most smooth-running, you know, registration processes. We actually had things out months in advance compared to other years. We heard from you as customers. We had to make it easier. And so give us your feedback. My motto is, feedback is a gift, growth is optional. So please, continue. Continue to give us your feedback on what's working, what we can do better in service to you and the girls. And again, it is my honor. It's my pleasure to be your national CEO. Thank you for the opportunity, and we'll see you soon.[1638.11][1638.11](applause)
Thank you.[1640.11][1640.11](applause) We'll see you soon. (applause) A huge, huge, huge thank you to Anna for spending this time with us today. What a special opportunity we have had. Please, another huge round of applause from her.[1663.11][1663.11](applause) And I want to thank all of you for being here today. Without you, this doesn't happen. This doesn't work, and you're the key to our success here at GSU. So thank you so much. I wanted to just have our board members who are here to stand up and say thank you, because you're kind of the behind-the-scenes. We have Eric back there. Pre. Jimmy. Thank you. Thank you.[1701.36][1701.36](laughter and applause) Thank you. It's the hard work that goes on behind the scenes, and it makes a lot of what we do happen. So I really appreciate all of them being here and supporting us tonight. And then also, a big thank you to our GS USA counterparts for being here and visiting today and being a part of this great event. So if you're here from GS USA, please just stand and thank you.[1732.23][1732.23](laughter and applause) Well, thank you for making this a wonderful evening. Thank you, Anna. I can't thank you enough for being here and inspiring us. I think we want to all go out and be better Girl Scouts now because of you. So thank you. Thank you. So have a wonderful evening. Anna's here. She has patches. So--[1760.44][1760.44](laughter) And I know Debbie has patches. I have some patches, so--
Parking.
Oh, and parking validations can be--
(inaudible).
Oh, there's parking validations for this lot if you went in the lot with the gate. There are validations at the front desk, okay? Thank you.[1777.32][1777.32](applause)[1778.32][1778.32](end of transcript)